Welcome to our legislative meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners of August the 25th. If we could please introduce ourselves, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Agent Dory, I'm the Communications Manager.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
County Commissioner Alicia Reese, Vice President of the Board.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Alito, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecute's Office.
Okay, okay. My name is Stephanie Summeradumas, President of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. We will start, as we always do, with silent prayer. And then after our silent prayer, if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I would just ask that we observe, there were a lot of young people that passed away tragically just this week. If we could think about them as we have our silent prayer today, thank you. Amen. I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Summeradumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. We have an important event that is happening today that we want to, as a board, to recognize someone very important. Ally Codada. Did I pronounce that right?
Close.
Oh, it's easier than I thought. Okay, come on up.
Thank you.
We are so pleased to recognize you today.
Thank you.
And Ally Codada is in the Department of Environmental Services and has been there for 30 years. Woo, wow. You don't even look 30. So I'm going to read a little bit about you. Ally Codada proudly serves as the Operations Manager of Hamilton County Environmental Services. During his 30-year career with the department, Ally has provided the needed leadership and longevity to guide both the Southwest Ohio Air Quality Agency and Hamilton County R3 Source to being recognized as a leading agency in their industries. Ally's tremendous attention to detail and accounting knowledge has earned him the reputation of being a go-to expect with our Ohio and US EPA partners. At Hamilton County, Ally has been awarded Employee of the Year awards for both individual and team accomplishments. Ally also proudly assisted the Hamilton County CARES Act team to help our community recover from the effects of COVID-19. With his high level of expertise in operations and accounting, Ally could have easily transferred to a private industry or consulting. However, he chose a 30-year-plus career in public service with steadfast dedication and consistent professionalism. The Hamilton County team is beyond grateful to Ally for his unwavering commitment to protect, preserve, and enhance the environmental quality of our communities. Congratulations, Ally.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to say a few words?
If you don't mind, I just appreciate the chance to thank a few people and just also give appreciation to some people that really helped me through my 30 years and stuff. I mean, I first came here from Oklahoma and I came with, out of college, no way of knowing, no job, no nothing. So I had the opportunity to interview for a job with the South, it was called Air Pollution Control at the time, but it's Southwest Ohio Air Policy Agency. But, you know, a lot of people gave me the opportunity and help and stuff. Marion Fitzgibbons was, she passed away, but she was a big influence on me, hired me and given me the ins and outs of the county. I've had some great payroll people as well as Marion, Darlene Shamponey, and also Lori Manning that works with me now. But a lot of them were really helpful and beneficial and helped me do a lot of the work that I do and stuff. But I do want to take the time to thank a few people because they kind of helped me and pushed me a little bit better than they realized. You know, when I met Jeff Alito back in 99 when he first started, so it kind of, he worked for Solid Waste Management District, and I remember that he would always come into my office and kind of pick my brains on my thoughts and my feelings on certain topics and certain issues and stuff. And I would give it to him and he'd always, you know, listen to it and, you know, a lot of times he, you know, would take some of that information and use it and stuff. So it made me feel a little bit more confident about myself, made me feel a little bit better, and it kind of pushed me and gave me more confidence in my abilities and stuff. So his management skill was probably one of the first that really helped me and benefited me along the ways. Even though he wasn't a direct manager for me, he always kind of was there to kind of talk to me and we discussed things that were business-related and stuff. Then Holly Christman was another person that was a solid waste manager over at the county once Jeff left for bigger and better things. And then Holly became Director, but she had a huge impact on me just as well as Jeff did. I mean, he, they both kind of had the same principle of, you know, having their employees kind of give ideas and share their thoughts and stuff and was willing to listen and take it on and stuff. So her impact on me was also big and beneficial. And then another person was Brad Miller, who's not here, but the majority of them are here. But Brad was Acting Director and he had the most knowledge probably that I've known of anybody in the Air Quality Agency. And he was just the same type of manager, same type of person that, you know, was willing to accept people's inputs and thoughts. And then finally, I want to recognize Brad Johnson. Brad Johnson's our current Director and he's been the same type of manager. So I've gone along the ways of the past 20-some-odd years of being influenced by quite a bit of many people that kind of allowed me to give my thoughts and help me and guide me and stuff. So I do appreciate all of them for that and I probably wouldn't have been able to have been as competent and as successful as I have been if it wasn't for their management skills. So I thank them for that.
That's great, absolutely, yeah. I'll open it up for my colleagues to see if they would have anything to say. And Jeff, I'm sure you have something to say. Vice President Reese.
Just want to say congratulations and thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Thank you. Congratulations to you. We've had an opportunity to interact because Ally has reported to the Solid Waste Policy Committee. And so your work there is keeping us on the straight and narrow and we're very grateful for that. And you're crunching the numbers, but 30 years in any organization is a long time.
Yeah.
And I think your experience, as you described it, with the folks that we now interact with on a daily basis, you know, have been really important to your career. So I think it's great that you've had that experience here at the county and I'm really grateful that you've been here for 30 years. Thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. I actually had prepared a short roast for Ally, but then after the nice comments, I kind of feel like I need to talk.
Now I want to hear it.
And I'm not quite sure he couldn't return it very quickly, so I better be careful. But honestly, Ally, they just don't come any more solid as a person and a professional than Ally Codada. And just such a top-notch person, I consider Ally a great friend, as well as someone who I learned a tremendous amount from when I first got to the county in terms of how the county operated from a financial perspective. He was really my first indoctrination to that. So I probably owe Ally more than he would owe me, but he is just, from a financial perspective, they don't come any better. And as a person, they don't come any better either. So the county has just been absolutely blessed to have his skills for the past 30 years. And, you know, at the end of the day, even for a Sooners fan and a Cowboys fan, he's kind of an okay guy, you know? So congratulations, Ally. I hope we have you for 30 more.
Yeah.
I see Holly is here. Holly, did you want to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam President. Just, I think Ally has been incredibly modest in his comments, but very kind. I thank you for that. Just to add a little bit to Jeff, one thing that wasn't mentioned, but was in your introductory comments, was Ally really stepped up under the CARES Act. And let me tell you, our team would never have been complete without him. Just one quick example, I was struggling with a grant we were providing and Ally called me and he's like, "Let me just do this for you, take this off your plate." And, "Yes, please, thank you." And, but he spent time on weekends to see that project through. And so I'm just really appreciative of his teamwork, his expertise, both detailed but also strategic, and grateful that he's been a coworker for as long as he has.
Great, thank you so much. And you had mentioned maybe Brad, is Brad here?
Brad Johnson, yes.
Would you like to say a couple words?
So I had the pleasure on Tuesday to mention Ally. And I'll just, you know, go back to what I said before, that being somebody new as a Director, Ally is the epitome of what you would want. The knowledge that he has, I know my time's limited with Ally, so I'm taking it very sacred and I'm trying to prepare for life after Ally. But yes, to say what Jeff said, very well said, Jeff, that Ally never takes credit for the work that he does. I've never seen somebody so dedicated that they'll be there. I think of myself, if somebody comes in early and leaves late, Ally beats me on a regular basis when it comes to that. So that's the type of dedication that Ally has. So I really appreciate that, Ally.
Great, thank you. So we have a 30-year pan for you. We're going to come down and take a picture with you, the Commissioners, and I'd like for those that have spoken about Ally, you can also be part of the next picture.
There we go. Wonderful, thank you so much.
One more for me. One more. One more. Thank you. Thank you.
Very good, always good to see. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation and recognition of "The Cure Starts Now Day." And you have a proclamation for that?
I do, thank you, Madam President. And we have quite a few guests, they're with the fancy masks on in the audience for the proclamation. But yeah, it's a proclamation and recognition of "The Cure Starts Now Day." And so I'm going to read just part of the proclamation and then ask some folks to come forward. So I'll just get started with that. Whereas "The Cure Starts Now" built the Home Run Cure Strategy to eradicate DIPG, DMG cancer, leading to the elimination of all cancers as we know it. And whereas "The Cure Starts Now" was started in 2007 by Keith and Brooke Deserich, who are here with us in the audience, in honor of their daughter Elena, who passed away from DIPG. And whereas "The Cure Starts Now" has funded over $26 million for pediatric brain cancer along with the DIPG collaborative partners. And whereas "The Cure Starts Now" has funded over 119 grants in 15 countries, citizens exception. Now therefore be it proclaimed that we, the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, do hereby proclaim the 1st of September 2022 as "The Cure Starts Now Day" in all of Hamilton County.
Right.
My understanding is that Keith is the designated speaker today, so if you would please come forward and say a couple words. But he does, as you can see, have his team with him.
Yes. Do I have to start them with "whereas" though?
You do not.
I'm not sure I could pull that together. No, we appreciate the recognition within Hamilton County. I, you know, my wife and I founded this back 15 years ago when we found out that there was nobody that was focusing on these home run cancers. And at the end of the day, I think everybody kind of looks at cancer and says, "We need to focus on treating the most number of people." And that's certainly noble. But what we looked at is we looked at that there were certain types of cancers that the experts believe that if we can cure them, we can wipe out cancer completely. And there is no charity still yet today worldwide that does that. And so what we wanted to do is we looked at it and said, "Well, I guess we have to create it and so forth." We have built "The Cure Starts Now," obviously in tribute and with a lot of help from my daughter as well. I have Brooke here, you're not going to get out this easy, so come on up here. Brooke is actually the CEO of the charity and so one of her responsibilities today was to say, "You get up and speak." But I can probably get away with it anyways. But we just, it's nice to know that there is some recognition with it, but more importantly, September 1st is a very key day because that is the beginning of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And with that in mind, we feel that it's tremendously appropriate to be able to focus on not only this cause, but also all the kids out there that are in the fight. We are a homegrown charity, you know, it's grown a lot bigger than we ever thought. We now have 39 locations, including in Australia and Canada, which makes for very long nights. But, you know, here, you may know of us from things like Hyde Park Blast. You may know of us from the Cones for the Cure campaign with Graders, which is going to be happening in about another week. From campaigns such as Brew Haha, which is happening tomorrow, and also some of our galas and everything. But the city of Cincinnati, Hamilton County, has been tremendously supportive of this and have given their hearts to it, and I think it's making a difference. What did I miss?
We have much of our staff and families here right now and we just appreciate their support and help. We represent 600 families worldwide and this is run by, this is run by families for families and we truly focus on treating each and every one of them as a very special case and we make sure that we support them from beginning to end and beyond. So we just appreciate you representing or recognizing us and with this proclamation and it means so much because, as Keith said, we started here in Hamilton County and our headquarters will forever be here in Hamilton County.
Yeah, and we appreciate the support, not all of you, but, you know, local partners that we have, such as like Cincinnati Children's Hospital. You know, they, last year did the Cure Starts Now Brain Tumor Center, which was amazing considering there wasn't necessarily anything other than just they value the partnership. And so there's a lot of folks in this area that are really leading the cause of cancer research, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say a few words, just thank you, what a great.
I was trying to run.
Oh, no. What a great mission. You guys are to be applauded and we'll do that in a minute, but it's certainly not enough. You saw a need and you filled it. And so hopefully down the line, there will be other entities that will follow and also provide some services as you guys are doing, but you did not allow it to stop you. So thank you so much for what all you do and your staff. Vice President Reese.
I just want to say, obviously, our heart goes out to your family and the selflessness of you saying, you know, "We don't want this to happen to any other family." And I think putting the light on this, I want to thank Commissioner Treehouse for bringing this forward because you have a good point on how do we wipe it out?
Yeah.
We talk about the treatment piece, but how do we wipe cancer out? And I think that's something that everyone, all walks of life and backgrounds and races and genders, et cetera, that's one thing we can unite on. And so, and we have to unite on it. So I want to thank you for what you are doing, what you have done, your staff, starting here, but also understanding this is worldwide and I think the focus is the right area. How do we wipe it out, stop it so it never hits anyone else? So thank you so much and we're happy to partner with you in this fight. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll come down and take a picture with you if it's okay and your staff can also come. Thank you so much. Okay, we will move forward. Right, you have in front, public comments, any public comments? Yeah, okay. Thank you. Here's Nick, hi Nick Crossley, our EMA Director. Okay, we have a proclamation and we do this every year, but every year is, we need to do it because emergency preparedness is so important. Did you want to speak?
Sure. If you want me, okay. So every year, September is National Preparedness Month, and not that we don't highlight preparedness year-round, but it is the month the United States focuses as a whole on disaster preparedness for residents, governments, and businesses. Obviously, the landscape for hazards and their impacts is changing. For Hamilton County specifically, the heat indices are expected to go up as high as perhaps 120 to 125 degrees in 30 years. Also, as you've seen, we've had one of the wettest summers on record. We're lucky that it's been spread out. We haven't seen flooding incidents, either flash flooding or riverine flooding we've seen in the past. However, it is a known and consistent threat to Hamilton County. The population density obviously adds to the uniqueness of our disaster vulnerability. And so what we do during this month and also year-round is work with private entities. We're doing some work with the University of Cincinnati and we're doing several public presentations and an online contest. We're trying to encourage people, A, to sign up for Alert Hamilton County. So again, we maintain and operate a system in Hamilton County that I think is somewhat unique. You can sign up for a text, an email, a phone call. We have 42 hazards in Hamilton County and you can sign up for an alert to be notified when those might impact our community. We're trying to encourage people to be prepared, whether that's through private insurance, renters' insurance, evaluating their risk and doing what they can to protect themselves. We're trying to work with businesses. We already work with Hamilton County Government, but we work with all 49 communities in Hamilton County to help them be better prepared so that they can help residents in the event of a disaster. So this month is just a month to highlight those activities and try to raise the specter with residents and businesses in Hamilton County and governmental agencies that disasters happen, they happen year-round, and that we need to be continually prepared.
Thank you so much, Nick. And our proclamation says a lot of that, that residents are responsible, that you guys can't do it all and shouldn't be expected to do it all. I'll read a little bit of the proclamation. Whereas National Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity for every resident, employee, and visitor in Hamilton County to become educated and informed about threats and hazards that may impact the county, thus equipping them to become better able to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities against a disaster of emergency. And whereas investing in the preparedness and education of ourselves, families, and businesses, and jurisdictions can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our community. And whereas Hamilton County Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency is working to increase public awareness of disasters and emergency preparedness by hosting a Partners' and Preparedness Meeting with community leaders, which I think I was in the last one.
You're speaking at it this year.
To discuss the readiness level of Hamilton County, engaged in robust social media preparedness campaign, and promoting the Emergency Notification System Alert for Hamilton County. Now therefore be it proclaimed that on behalf of all residents and community members of Hamilton County, this Board encourages all residents, businesses, and communities to develop their own preparedness plans and sign up for the Emergency Notification System, as you were saying, Alert Hamilton County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, thus hereby proclaim September 2022 as National Preparedness Month in Hamilton County, signed by all of the Commissioners. as National Preparedness Month in Hamilton County, signed by all of the commissioners. Hey, we have a proclamation for you. It's actually, we'll make sure you, do you have it now? We'll, we'll go get that, yeah.
We're good.
And make sure we do it, and then we'll take pictures in just a minute.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, you do have, okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. And while we're waiting for that proclamation to come, we have one public comment. Carrie Davis is on the line on Zoom. Hello, Carrie.
Hello, ladies. Thank you very much. Wow, that guy from Environmental Services is pretty impressive. I thank him for his service there, about the best entity I find in the county. But anyway, I wanted to thank Commissioner Dumas and Commissioner Reese for pushing the board's policy to have minorities represented on committees. The Solid Waste Committee did appoint a gentleman who is extraordinarily qualified to sit on the committee. And he happens to be a young black man, so we have some youth on the board now. We have minority representation. He's got his hands full because he's walked into a hornet's nest. But your insistence on actually following through with the policy adopted is going to greatly improve the representation of all people in this community on boards and commissions of the Board of Commissioners. I also want to state that Mr. Drehouse continues to push Mr. DePuccio's involvement in the committee. At the last meeting on four different occasions, I had to object to Mr. DePuccio's deliberating and voting on matters that impact his client. And that we have asked for a copy of the legal opinion related to Mr. DePuccio's conflicts of interest. The prosecutor is right, and we've never disagreed that the board, the committee has the authority to appoint the member, but it is the duty, the legal duty of the board to ensure that the persons being appointed to their commissions and committees are qualified, meaning is he really a solid waste generator and does not have conflicts of interest. And that issue is still being, is being brought before the court because Ms. Drehouse insists on having a landfill consultant for the only landfill in Hamilton County on this committee. But I do want to thank you ladies for pushing the policy adopted and making words become actions in Hamilton County. You did a great job on that, ladies. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Appreciate your comments. So we're going to go right up here with Nick Crossley, and we have our proclamation. We'd like to take a picture.
I know, watch out for the trip. That is great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that being our only public comment, I will move forward to comments and motions. I'll start with just a few activities that I've been involved with since we last met on the 12th. We had our family children at First Council, and I am the representative for the board on that, and it went very well reviewed. We have a lot of new members. Superintendent of School is on there. And they're, they're just a really good group, a good diverse group. And they're asking a lot of questions. And what was really exciting for me is we've been trying to get parent representatives since I've been on there for two years. And so we now have three other parents on, so I was really excited about that. I attended the Bengals pep rallying game, their first pregame. All the commissioners attended that. That was a lot of fun to get everybody riled up and going for the first preseason game. And then I attended Allen Temple. There was a mortgage burning ceremony, and I was a part of that. And we gave a proclamation for that purpose and had a webinar with Josh Springs, who's head of the Homeless Coalition Affordable Housing webinar. There were, oh, I would say maybe 30 people on the webinar that provide services for the homeless. So just really informative group. And then CCAO had a human services meeting. I am on the Public Safety and the Human Services Committee, and I was part of that webinar. And then Black Family Reunion was this weekend. And so the breakfast, breakfast was on Friday. The Black Family Reunion Parade was Saturday. And then Sunday, I appeared during the gospel concert to give a proclamation from the commissioners recognizing the Black Family Reunion. I was on a webinar about, it wasn't a webinar. I met with Phil Beck as it relates to Fort Washington Way and possible upgrades. And then last but least today, Commissioner Greathouse was also there for a talent collaborative kickoff. And it's SOACT, which has responsibility for our workforce development in Hamilton County. And it's a really exciting initiative that's going to be started here in this whole region. So just a busy week, a couple, week and a half. And so I just wanted to share it with the residents and also my colleagues. And that's all I have as it relates to comments and motions. Vice President Reese.
Yes, thank you. Wanted to highlight that this week marks the 30th anniversary of SOACT organization that was founded by Sandra Jones Mitchell. It's an organization dedicated to urban senior citizens. And they started in Avondale. They've been going all across Hamilton County. And Sandra Jones Mitchell, I just want to congratulate her and acknowledge her because she has done this usually with her own money and investment, how she started out, and helped a lot of seniors who normally would not be integrated with being able to still have a quality of life. So this year is their 30th anniversary, and I'm looking forward to presenting a proclamation from, that is signed by all three of us for her 30th anniversary. I also want to acknowledge that SOACT, with a partnership with the Council on Aging, implemented our new Senior Citizen Fund, where they were able to help hundreds of senior citizens to the tune of a million dollars, helping them pay their gas and electric and be able to keep the water on. And because we saw that our American Rescue Dollars could not assist them, and we were able to put a fund together. But I want to thank SOACT for hitting the ground and getting to people who might not be on social media, may not watch it on television, but she was able to go to them and get them connected with the help that they need. So again, congratulations on 30 years. This has been obviously her passion because she retired and then kept going. So she was doing it, she had a job, she started this and was doing it and retired and said, I'm going to keep doing what I love to do. So congratulations to SOACT. Secondly, I want to acknowledge Dr. Chandra Monroe Williams, who is being announced tonight with the University of Cincinnati as the new Executive Director of Urban Impact and Project Learning at the University of Cincinnati Lender Urban Impact Studio, the Business College. And I think that's going to be a great thing. Dr. Chandra Monroe Williams has done a lot of work over the years as a business owner, as well as someone who has done a lot of planning for the Urban League and a number of other organizations. She also works with Spelman College in Atlanta as well. And I wanted to congratulate her. One of the exciting things I wanted to say to Jeff, our administrator, is that she's looking to see how the College of UC Lender, College of Business and Urban Impact Studio can help partner more with the county. If there's things we're researching or projects that we're working on. One of the things she's mentioned, she's willing to utilize the students, the Business College of resources to try to connect with us and help with any type of projects that we may have. So housing, of course, is one of them, affordable housing is one. And that may be something that the college can partner. I know we've done other partnerships with UC and Xavier in the past, but maybe we could get something out of the Business College. I know we've got small business office we're doing. But she's very excited to see how she can better work with us and Holly, and so I'll connect her with you as well. But I wanted to congratulate her today. That's a huge deal, especially with the UC Lender College of Business, and especially with the diversity of her. I believe she's the first African American woman to be in this position at the University of Cincinnati. Also, I also did meet as well this week with Fort Washington Way, the Chamber, Regional Chamber folks, I think probably meet with each of us. And Fort Washington Way and looking at the caps. And I was on council when we said, let's invest in the infrastructure early on so that when caps are available, we would already have the infrastructure there. One of the things I wanted to highlight, however, is that as Hamilton County, we've got several big ticket projects that have to get done. And unfortunately, we're not Santa Claus. You got to choose what you're going to do. Santa Claus don't bring you everything. And I indicated to them, and I wanted to say it publicly so people know exactly what I, my indication was. One, I was disappointed that it was a green space drawing. And it sounds good where people can play kickball and pickleball and have a free concert. I think we are over inundated with that already. We have Smale Park, we have Sawyer Point. There's also expanding their pickleball down at Sawyer Point. We have Washington Park. We have a number, we have Fountain Square, that's just downtown. And as the county, obviously, we represent all 48 and a half municipalities. And we have a number of things that are on our list that we have to deal with, and we've got to make some decisions. We've got a stadium that's almost a billion dollars that we've got to negotiate called Paycor Stadium now. We have a hotel that in a few weeks, I guess, we'll be hearing more about, a headquarter hotel, and that was over 50 million, almost 100 million with the convention center possible expansion. We have a gun range that we're short financially. We, we're closer than we ever been. This board took the boldest step and put the 5 million on the table. But, you know, it's almost 20, 40 million, low 11 million. We do get some money coming in, thanks to United States Senator Sherrod Brown, 4 million, but we still short. So when you look at these things, and then you bring in Fort Washington Way and say, oh, it's going to be $100 million for some green space. We're trying to bring in some greenbacks. We're trying to bring in things that's going to bring money to reduce the cost on the local homeowner. Let's bring outside money, bring conventions, something that's going to bring tourism dollars, and let's take the cost down on the local homeowner. So I wanted to just express that that was my issue. I understand that they are looking to get a grant to do a study. And I've been around long enough, been at the city, I've been at the county, and I've been at the state, and nobody wants to study something that ain't going to really happen. So I want to be clear that I'm more interested in not just the study. We can afford the study, but what's the end result? And right now, $100 million based on all these other things we have to do and keeping the cost down on the taxpayer, it doesn't make my top 10 list at this, or my top five. So I wanted to highlight that, that's where I'm at. Now, if there's another way that's going to make money and bring money in, then we might have a different conversation. But right now, with all the other items on the list, it's not in my top five at this particular time. I know they were saying, we'll give federal money and all that. We're, thanks to Sherrod Brown, we got $4 million for the gun range. Viaduct, Western Hills Viaduct, it was the taxpayers, issue seven, that's paying for that. Hopefully, fingers crossed, the Brent Spence Bridge, we can get something. But Washington has not had a habit except for American Rescue money, CARES Act money. They haven't had a, I haven't seen us at the top of the line. Even the Director of Transportation is going to send Dusky to make an announcement. They not coming here. So until I can talk to the Transportation Director himself, I think we need to double check what our coffers can afford at this particular time. Because I don't, I'm going to be on record, I'm not for a tax. I don't want another issue seven for Washington, Fort Washington Way. So I wanted to be on record for that, from my perspective. I'm just speaking for me. The other thing I wanted to indicate that I want to thank from this past week, the ARPA presentation, I want to thank Holly. And since that time, our website has been updated. Just want to let people know, homeowners, the website is updated now. There's a different category for rental and a different category for homeowner. And that's critical right now because I'm understanding CAA and, and I know us, we're putting a pause on the rental side because we haven't received the money yet. But we do have money for the mortgage side. So homeowners, I didn't want you to get confused if you're a homeowner. That number was low, as Holly was saying, we want to get that number up, get more money out. I think 700,000's gone out. We got about 5 million that's scheduled. So homeowners, homeowners, homeowners. You can go to our website, 513relief.org, and go to the homeowner component, and it is available for you to, to work, to go forward. Also, I did also attend the Black Family Reunion on Saturday. I attended every year. It's a very important event, very important message. And I want to thank all those who came out with families of multi-generations, as well as congratulate Tracy Artist, who has taken it over and has done a great job. So I wanted to acknowledge that as right, as well. And also just want to send a prayer out to, my family wasn't able to make SOACT today. We lost a very close family member. And just want to, so many people are losing family members out there. But I do want to send some good prayers away to, to my family. A lot of them have come in town and are still around at the repass right now. So again, just, you know, love and hug your, your loved ones. I also want to send prayers out to the six-year-old that lost her life, way too young, at the hands of her father. Send a prayers out to all the families and everybody involved. It was a very sad day in Hamilton County, and especially when we talked about children. So that's all that I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for your loss. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, I too, I'm sorry for your loss. Yeah, I just have a couple of things. I represented the Commission at the Park Eden Grand Opening. It's a CMHA project up in Walnut Hills. And we had toured it a while back, and it is finished, and it looks fantastic. So big shout out to Greg Johnson and his team for doing a really fantastic job up at the Park Eden. Also, there was a press conference about something that we have done related to divert and expanding that program throughout the county, hoping to get to all 49 jurisdictions. We're not quite there yet, but we have made a major commitment to make sure that the divert program is available throughout the entirety of Hamilton County. And we have invested in that, so I'm very proud of that. And I was able, on behalf of the Commission, to speak and, and talk about our commitment to that program. I also went to an event for Polly Doran, who retired from the COA, the Council on Aging. Polly, I think, had been there over 30 years. We all know Polly. She is the one that helped us understand how important it is to keep seniors in their homes and what our role is in trying to help with that effort. And so I did many tours with people, into people's homes with Polly, and she is just a gem and just a good person. And so I provided a proclamation on behalf of the Commission at her retirement party. I also went to the Black Family Reunion. I'm surprised we didn't all see each other. But anyway, I was down there, I think on Saturday, and ran into folks from YIMDAP and Closing the Health Gap and a multitude of other organizations. So it was. Closing the Health Gap and, and multitude of other organizations. So it was really a beautiful day and a, and a great event. And then lastly, I did something that it was really interesting and, and kind of fun. Um, I did something with Last Mile Food Rescue. So this is the group that rescues food from places like, like restaurants or grocery stores and they provide it to folks in need. Uh, think Our Daily Bread and some of the other nonprofits and also communities. I think, I believe they're doing this in Avondale right now. And so, uh, we got to tag along on a food rescue from Kroger to Our Daily Bread. And it could not have gone more smoothly. There was a lot of food that was rescued and then brought to Our Daily Bread and they then use it to feed the folks that are coming in. So it was really an interesting, um, time for us. I brought some of my staff with me. Um, and so a big shout out to Last Mile for the work they're doing. It's fairly new organization, but the impact they're having and Julie Schiffman is really the lead on it. But they've got a multitude of volunteers that do this work and it's just really a great thing for this community. So that's all I've got, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, our county administrator, Jeff Aludo.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, no comments today, just, uh, there are two by leaves in your packet. Um, one is an, uh, is an appointment, um, and I'll defer to you, Madam President, on the introduction of, of that item. Uh, item number one, however, is a by leave, uh, resolution authorizing the administrator to enter into a, an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners, Hamilton County, Ohio, and Strategies to End Homelessness. Uh, this is the grant that, uh, has been talked about through our ARPA presentations. This is ARPA funding. Uh, this, uh, work or this agreement and resolution will allow us to work with Strategies to End Homelessness to expand, uh, the, uh, uh, the Shelter Diversion Program of Strategies to End Homelessness, whereas currently we're doing about six months of, of casework and wraparound services. This will allow that to expand to a year, um, and provide those, um, uh, not only the housing, but the casework and the, and the various wraparound services that go with helping someone make sure they don't fall into homelessness. Um, I know the board has received a lot of data through the ARPA process about the, the cost effectiveness of keeping someone out of homelessness versus, um, dealing with that same individual when they, when they actually become homeless and the cost associated with that. So this is a, a very cost-effective way of, of making sure that all those folks that are out there who might be one couch away, uh, from being homeless, that we're able to intercept them before they fall into that population and getting them rehoused and, and connected to the various services that they need. Um, I would like to say, uh, Kevin Finn from Strategies to End Homelessness is here. He's able to answer any questions that the board might have. I just want to, um, at this time also just thank Kevin for all the work that he does. Uh, obviously, the, the county partners with Kevin and Strategies, uh, uh, to a great extent, especially as it relates to the, uh, continuum of, of care for homelessness and, uh, the work that we do through community development. And Kevin's just been a great partner throughout the year. So, but he is here. Uh, if the board has any, uh, specific questions about the program or the resolution.
Okay. Thank you so much. Welcome, Kevin. Um, would you like to say a few words or Jeff kind of summed it up? Okay. All righty. Uh, are there any, uh, any discussion as relates to this by leave? No?
Just one comment. Um, I, I am happy to support this and want to just highlight this partnership that we have with Kevin and his organization, uh, Strategies to End Homelessness. You've been a great partner throughout the pandemic especially, and, uh, I'm glad to see that we're expanding upon that work that we've done together. Thank you.
Thank you. With no further discussion or questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve by leave one. Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming. Yeah, thank.
Madam President. I'm sorry. I know I said I didn't want to say anything, but I just wanted to highlight this is one of the components of our affordable housing dollars that we put in. We diversified the housing piece. One was homeless, the in homelessness. So I just wanted to highlight, uh, this is another one that, uh, is moving forward in our forty million dollars toward affordable homes.
Very good. Thank you for that comment. Um, we'll, by leave two, I'll go on with Jeff and it's a resolution appointing two members to the Hamilton County Public Defender Commission, Eva Hager and Iris Rowley. Is there any discussion?
I, yes. Once, once again, I'm, I'm gonna support this. Um, I'm especially, Iris Rowley was here earlier today. She thought she had to be here and she also thought our meeting started at ten. So she was here at the wrong time in the wrong place. Um, but, uh, she's very excited about this and I'm, I'm very excited that she's willing to serve in this way. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm sure they will both be great assets, uh, to the Public Defender Commission. Okay.
Madam President, can you also, uh, just, I would just say also, we've done a lot to diversify this board. Uh, public defenders, I think the last time we had our first ever, uh, African-American male, young male, who's also a attorney, uh, to be a part of this, uh, uh, Gabriel Fletcher, I think was his name. And now with Iris Rowley and others, uh, we are really, I think, opening and expanding and bringing, uh, a lot of different mindsets to the table. Uh, so I think that helps strengthens the board as well.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve by leave two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. We have a public hearing. I was just sitting here thinking, we hardly ever, we, we schedule all our public hearings at one fifteen and they, our discussion always goes longer. So we either need to schedule the public hearings a little, uh, later or either have it before maybe our comments. So our public hearing is to discuss the possible issuance by the County of Allen, Ohio Hospital Facilities Revenue Bonds.
Uh, Madam President, I'll just, uh, kick that off and invite Michael Dean from Dinsmore to the podium to help inform the, uh, the public hearing. Uh, this is a conduit bond issuance where some of the proceeds are going to be spent uh, within Hamilton County, thus necessitating the hearing. Uh, Michael's joined us multiple times in the past for these. I believe Dinsmore, uh, is the bond counsel for this particular, uh, project. So I'll turn it over to Michael to walk the board through the public hearing.
Correct. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, Commissioners, always good to be here and thank you for hosting us once again. Um, as Jeff explained, this is about a, a bond issued by the County of Allen, Ohio. Why are we here talking about the County of Allen, Ohio?
Maybe, uh, lean into the microphone, yeah.
I sure can. Yes. Uh, I always, I, I, the last couple of times I got too close to a microphone, so I tried to. Um, so yes, why are we here talking about a, a County of Allen bond issue? Uh, there's a, a federal law that requires, uh, a hearing to be held wherever bond proceeds are going to be spent, uh, when they are taxing of bonds issued by a government to be used by a private corporation, in this case Mercy Health. The overall size of the bond issue is, uh, not to exceed three hundred million. This is going to go, uh, throughout the state of Ohio. So we've already held hearings this week in Butler County, Claremont County, Brown County, Warren County, I believe up in Wood County as well. Uh, in here in Hamilton County, the amount not to exceed would be fifty million dollars. Uh, be spent at a, a number of locations. I believe the list ticks up an entire page or more within the resolution. Um, but a number of locations owned and operated by Mercy Health or its affiliates in the county. Uh, so yes, federal law requires a hearing to be held and then for the highest applicable elected representative within that jurisdiction to approve the use of bond proceeds. Um, so that's what we're here to do today. If there are public comments, I'm certainly happy to answer questions or of course, questions, uh, from the Commissioners or administration.
Thank you so much for your comments. I will open it up for more. Vice President Reese, you have any questions or comments?
Actually, thank you. I do have a question.
Sure.
Um, I know that we have a hospital commission and these bonds kind of like a pass through. Um, we're not on the hook in terms of the counties. But I'm trying to understand when you named all these other counties, do they have a, a similar board? And do they issue bonds through their health commissions?
Some do, some don't. Um, Hamilton County is, I think, the only one locally with a, a specific hospital commission. Uh, Butler County, Warren, Claremont, they've all issued these types of bonds themselves for different entities. Uh, in this case, the County of Allen has a history issuing for Mercy Health, uh, throughout the state. Uh, so just for presidential purposes and they, they like to work with Allen County. Um, they're gonna do that again. And so we approved a similar measure here in 2020. Uh, and the last time Allen County served as an issuer for Mercy Health, uh, as well at that time. And, and usually we try to line up these public hearings with the hospital commission meetings. It's not to, of inconvenience to board here with them. Um, but in this case, uh, we, we weren't able to get everything together by the time of the July, uh, hospital commission meeting. And they would like to get everything sort of approved by the end of this week instead of waiting to the October eleventh hospital commission meeting, which would be the next one. So market conditions have kind of put us in the position here where we've asked to, uh, have the public hearing here at the county commission meeting. Um, but yes, so some other, other counties have these hospital commissions. I know Franklin County does. Um, Hamilton County does as well. Um, but in this case, yeah, we're just, uh, Allen County would be the issuer of the bonds. There would be no liability, financial or otherwise for Hamilton County. Um, and, uh, yeah, I think as long as that answers your question, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get an understanding. Allen County, they're issuing the bonds.
Correct.
And these projects are taking place where?
Uh, all over the state, several different counties. Yes. Yeah. That's why we're asking for this approval. Yeah. Up to fifty million dollars is expected to be spent here on new projects and refinancing of a two thousand seventeen bond issue that Mercy Health also issued through Allen County.
Do we ever issue the bonds?
Oh, in a lot of cases.
Hamilton County?
Yeah, a lot of cases, yeah. But not in this one. Uh, for example, we have a couple of other transactions. Excuse me, Christ Hospital, Children's Hospital, uh, I think UC Health has come through here as well, uh, in the past. So yes, we work with a lot of the more local hospitals that have a, a more statewide or regional presence. Uh, Mercy being as, as big as it is, uh, now sort of operates, uh, on a different level. So they, uh, and again, have used Allen County for a number of years. I think it's just a matter of efficiency for them to have an issuer that they're used to working with. Um, and then, and to, for us to try and get these approvals throughout the state, uh, so that they can use those proceeds, uh, by one bond issue. Instead of going through, you know, each county to issue a separate bond issue, uh, would drastically increase the cost of financing.
Got you. And the hospital commission, their only job is to look at these bonds, right?
I believe they have other duties, but in my, in my work, yes.
I mean, the reason I'm saying it, cause I'm like uncomfortable that we have this hospital commission that has people that this is what they're supposed to be doing. And you're saying, well, we wanted to, we couldn't meet whenever they're meeting, so we wanted to bypass them.
Oh, not, not intending to bypass, no. The purpose of this is just to let the public have a, an opportunity to speak. So it could, it could really be held at, at any time or place, but this was the most convenient one with, where us asking for the approval at the same time. Uh, so yes, we do try to line those up with hospital commission meetings, but unfortunately the schedule just didn't work out this time.
And then will they see this before the hospital commission? Will they get a chance to?
They will not on this matter, only because they're not issuing the bonds. Um, so yeah, County of Allen will hold their own hearings. And again, we've had hearings in other counties. Uh, but this would be the extent of the county's involvement would be the approval today and the hospital commission. Yeah.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse, no questions? And as, as you were saying, Hamilton County does not have any financial liability as it relates to the bonds.
Correct. Yeah. There is a public hospital, public participating hospital agencies agreement that has been in place for a number of years and all the resolution does is affirm that, not approve it. We're not authorizing execution of any new documents. It will stay as is. Uh, this agreement is also held with several others. The same agreement with multiple counties as parties. So I think it's back to two thousand eight or so. Um, so yeah, no financial liability, not signing any documents. Um, just an approval of the use of proceeds here in the county.
And I, I keep hearing you say approval and we're going to close the hearing if there is no, uh, additional comments. But the approval takes place, uh, it's in our consent agenda, is it?
Correct. Yes, Madam, Madam President, yes, we have it on the consent agenda.
Correct. Yeah. And we can pull that off if you'd like, but, but yeah, happy to, whatever you'd like. Yep.
So I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So much for your comments.
Of course. Thank you.
Okay, now we have regular agenda. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. How are you today?
Great.
Good. Have two items for you today. Item number one is the, uh, resolution to vacate a portion of Spencer Avenue. Uh, township fee right away on behalf of the Board of Sycamore Township. It's in section fourteen township four, entire range one of Sycamore Township. Um, as you may recall, we held the public hearing in front of the board on July twenty-eighth. Um, and this office recommends the adoption of the resolution vacating a portion to the, to the township.
Thank you so much. Any discussion or questions? Like to make a motion to approve item one?
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the Hamilton County engineer to execute a project uh, agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the Bierman Road Bridge replacement. Um, as we presented in our budget hearing the other day, you had asked to, uh, see how much we leverage projects. This project, we got a hundred percent funding from ODOT. And this, this, uh, agreement will allow us to enter into that, uh, that funding agreement for the Bierman Road Bridge deck replacement.
That is awesome. A hundred percent funding and they are focusing on bridges more.
They are. This is part of the, uh, in, uh, Infrastructure Act. The money that went to the state for bridges is being passed down to locals. Um, we're hoping this is the first of several that we're able to obtain.
Great. Vice President Reese, any comments or questions? No? I'd like to make a motion to approve item two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Okay, next MSD. Hello, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Jack Renekemp with Metropolitan Sewer District. Pitch hitting for my staff, Lauren DeGrecia, who is, uh, not able to attend today. Uh, we have two items on your agenda and with me is, uh, one of our principal engineers, Matt Spadari, um, to answer any technical questions that, that you may have on these two projects. The first project is sanitary sewer sixty-five thirteen Paxton Avenue at Linwood Avenue Sewer Replacement. Uh, the request is for approval and funding of construction of this project, um, and which is located in the city of Cincinnati's Mount Lookout neighborhood. The funding request is five hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars and total project cost is six hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. What this project will accomplish is in part replacing an existing sewer that was installed in nineteen oh seven, uh, which consists of vitrified clay pipe, which was the standard at the time, and a portion of which is located underneath a building, existing building. Uh, our wastewater collection division nominated this project after performing closed circuit television review of the sewer segments and found that shape loss and joint separation was exhibited in a portion of this sewer. Uh, the conditions are likely a result of not only the way that the sewer was constructed at the time, construction standards in nineteen oh seven being different than what they are in twenty twenty-two, as well as changing site conditions from environmental or human impacts. MSD will abandon a portion of the sewer that is currently located under a building and install approximately a hundred and fifty linear feet of twenty-four inch sewer and four manholes in a new alignment, as well as connect five existing service laterals and one fifteen-inch private sewer. Uh, the current construction estimate has increased approximately eight percent from, uh, the twenty twenty-two CIP in part due to one of the favorite topics that you all, uh, see in construction, market con- conditions that have changed dramatically over the past two years. Specifically going from, uh, within an estimate of from ten percent to twenty percent to reflect, uh, not only things such as inflation, but also rising fuel prices, increases in material surprises, prices and supply chain uncertainty. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you so much. Um, you're asking for five hundred, five hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred. And I thought I heard you say that the project was six sixty-five, three hundred, which is a difference of about forty-four thousand. So are you taking money from another project that might have been underbid or something?
The, the construction cost that we're requesting is the five hundred and nineteen thousand. The remaining cost of the total project is what has already been appropriated by this board for its design.
Okay, already appropriated. Okay. Thank you. Uh, any questions? Questions? Like to make a motion to approve item three?
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, the second item on your agenda for today for MSD, item number four, is sanitary sewer seven zero nine six Muddy Creek FEMA Property Acquisition and Flood Plane Reconfiguration. MSD has presented this project to you at several occasions since, uh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, and the current request is to, uh, approve and to implement the second phase of demolition of properties that have been acquired, uh, under this hazard mitigation grant that is funded by, uh, FEMA, uh, and Ohio EMEA, EMA as well as MSD. The total project cost from all funding sources for, for this hazard mitigation grant is five point five million. MSD's contribution is one point five million or twenty-seven point seven percent of the total project cost. And OE, FEMA and OEMA jointly contribute, uh, four million, um, or about seventy-two point three percent of total project cost to this project. The current request is to approve an appropriation of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars of the FEMA. The current request is to approve an appropriation of a hundred and twenty seven thousand eight hundred dollars of the FEMA and Ohio funding share of for contracting demolition. Again, these are, these costs for demolition are coming from the FEMA portion of this grant, not from the MSD portion of this grant. FEMA awarded OEMA and MSD this hazard mitigation grant as indicated in twenty twenty one to address chronic environmental hazards present in this portion of the sewer district's collection system, which are beyond the capacity of MSD sewer backup prevention program to mitigate. The purpose of the project is to, one, voluntarily acquire and demolish up to thirty one residential properties, as well as there are four vacant properties that need to be acquired along flood prone area, flood prone areas along Muddy Creek Road in both the city of Cincinnati's Westwood neighborhood and a portion of it lies within Green Township. Homes in this area have experienced repeated flooding and sewer backups over the last few decades. It's this area of homes also lies within a flood prone area of that has been developed and repaved to facilitate the development of these residential neighborhoods since the mid nineteen fifties. MSD plans to bid phase two demolition as soon as possible, following your consideration and hopefully approval of this legislation expects to have all five residential parcels, that's the subject of this demolition, removed by December thirty one, twenty twenty two. We've already bid phase one and have contracted for phase one of the demolition, which was for eight residential homes as well as asbestos abatement and any other activities to mitigate any asbestos indications within the 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 properties. In terms of status, MSD has closed and acquired on a total of fifteen or forty eight percent of the thirty one residential properties since twenty twenty one. Seven remaining residential parcels are under contract to acquire and closing is dependent upon the ability of the property owners to find replacement housing. Under current FEMA guidelines, that replacement is not facilitated with these funds. That's up to them to find that housing. However, this board did take an action in twenty twenty one to assist with what is called gap assistance and providing that to property owners to lessen the impact of acquiring new housing. Three parcels within this project area, their owners declined to sell and four properties are currently being appraised and two properties have not yet been appraised at this point in time. Again, housing market conditions are a significant factor within this project simply because of the variabilities that have occurred since twenty twenty. And the due to this factor as well, MSD has asked and FEMA has granted an enhanced date for completing this project from January twenty twenty three, which is fast approaching until October of twenty twenty three. Happy to answer any questions on this project as well.
Thank you. I know Muddy Creek has come up when I first came here. And with some of the homeowners agreeing to this process and others not, will it stop the demolition or construction that you need to do in that area? Do you need agreement by all of them since they are aligned together?
The the process is driven voluntarily, so as soon as someone agrees and then we have an understanding of a contract and then they find the replacement housing, we close on that property. We're approaching this within phases, so we can't take all thirty one at one time because we don't know if we're going to have thirty one people desiring to sell their parcels.
So that December thirty first date, you said there will be five homes.
Five homes in this round, yes.
Oh, that'd be, that'd be great. I know for them, it's not great because they they've been in the midst of it the whole time, but that's good. So Vice President Reese, you have any comments?
Yeah, just had a quick comment kind of following up. So you indicated the three property owners are not interested in selling. What does happen in that case?
In that situation, number one, we can't force them to be part of the project, but we do notify them that they are not part of this particular acquisition. They still are eligible if there are SBUs occurring at their property. I don't know off the top of my head if any of those three parcels have existing SBU prevention program devices, but they still reside within, you know, our purview from having to assist them should that occur.
But they don't, they don't interfere necessarily with the progress.
No, they do not.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt item four.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Jimmison.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drenhouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We will move forward on our consent agenda items. I have items five through twenty eight. I'll just mention a couple of them and certainly you can comment on the ones you may have questions or comments about. Item nine is a resolution authorizing the county administrator entered into a MOU between the board and Hamilton County General Health District through the American Rescue Plan funding six hundred and forty thousand dollars. Item eleven is bid awards and contracts authorized and executed by Purchasing Department for the month of July twenty twenty two, four hundred sixteen thousand eight hundred and thirty. And Jeff, maybe it's me, but it seems a little higher than usual. I'm not asking you to really answer that, but for one month, I don't remember it being that high. And I'm sure we got the documentation. I can take a look at it. Item thirteen, HVAC unit for Paul Brown Stadium, a hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars. I'll move down to item fifteen, which is five hundred thousand dollars on behalf of Job and Family Services for audio transcription products and services. Item sixteen is they're getting another car, purchase of a twenty twenty two Ford Explorer in the Sheriff's Department. And then a car, item seventeen, and environmental services for twenty seven thousand seven hundred. And then we have item eighteen is an agreement between KZF Design and the Board of Hamilton County on behalf of the county facilities for architectural and engineering design for one million, a little over one million. And item twenty is a resolution accepting a purchase order of Hamilton County authorized and execution and release on behalf of the juvenile court. Under JFS, item twenty one, Tower House, who is a provider for our young young children and also some adults, there is an agreement for the comprehensive case management and employment program, CCMEP services, four point six million. Item twenty two is residential treatment services through JFS and we have one, two, three. And item twenty three, which is a JFS residential services, is two point eight five million. Item twenty four residential services is three hundred and fifty six thousand dollars. I guess I'm just thinking, I'm so glad that the county is taking care of these babies. I just wish a time will come when we won't need as much residential services because they'll be able to be in healthy homes. But until then, we have to do what we do. Item twenty five, an agreement with Lighthouse Youth Services on behalf of the Department of Job and Family Services for two point five million. And that was all that I had that I wanted to bring up. Open it up. Vice President Reese, did you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I did. I want to go to, I want to start with item number eleven. Going into our purchasing department, our procurement department, and there's a number of items totaling over four hundred thousand. But the item that I wanted to go to was, if you go to that point, I want to ask the administrator. Airmark Sports Entertainment, it has, it's for our stadium. I'm not sure if it's both Great American and Paycor Stadium, or is it just one stadium?
I think this is, Madam Vice President, this is preseason cleaning just for the Bengals.
Okay.
It's an extension of the existing agreement through Airmark for preseason cleaning.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to find out because do we do the contract with Airmark? I thought I had asked that question. Maybe I misunderstood it. So Airmark usually comes in and they will bid on the concessions and any weddings or event, they would do all the catering and that kind of stuff.
Right.
And my understanding was that was, we had nothing to do with it.
Yeah, this is more, this is cleaning services directly. So this is, this is not necessarily the food provision, but a specific contract extension for cleaning services for preseason.
Okay, so they have two contracts. The food side of Airmark would be directly with the tenant, the Bengals.
And and this.
And then cleaning, do we, do we do a bidding and then, or is it?
We do, we do. This is a subject, subject to a procurement.
Okay.
I can't say that it's specifically two. I can find, I can get you an entire listing, though, of the different contracts that are out there.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of get an understanding because obviously if if it's, you know, we have any authority on it, which I would have hoped we would have, but inside the stadium, then there's, that's a whole nother conversation with Airmark and there's some others that are out there.
Right.
And so when I saw Airmark's name, I got a little concerned. I said, now, wait a minute. I thought we had nothing to do with Airmark. Now, we're all of a sudden in charge of the cleaning, but we're not in charge of the contract dealing with the concessions and the, I guess, the people that make the mess. So we're not in charge of the hamburger wrappers thrown down. I mean, we're in charge of the hamburger wrappers thrown down, but not making hamburgers. So I just need to understand that. Because I saw them up here again, where they're directly contracting with us for a hundred and eighty three thousand to clean. So just wanted to get some clarity with that going forward.
Sure.
Because usually those contracts are long term contracts, ten years and those kind of things. I don't know how long this.
I don't know that it's that, I don't know that it's that long in this particular case, but I can get you a full breakdown on it.
Okay, the reason I also asked, I know that we have been asking about, you know, we're, you know, we're I guess it brings me to, we need to get moving on whatever hap, we got the disparity findings of what we already knew, but we had to go through that exercise. Now it's like it's time for the action part of it. And I think one of the things we thought about, when you look at these different categories of where you can have capacity, I believe cleaning services was one of them, professional cleaning services was one of them. So just wanted to look at those opportunities.
Absolutely. And I just on on that note, Madam Vice President, we, number one, I'm working with Robert Bell to pull together for the board a list of the disparity study items that, you know, there was a huge list, if you remember, of the recommendations from that from that study, but we know that there are some that we can move forward on right now.
Yeah.
And so we want to get in front of the board those particular items that we want to move forward on immediately. And then some of the others that are going to take a little bit more time to implement. This one was one in particular, the concept of breaking down different larger procurements into smaller bins so that it would provide the ability for vendors to bid at a smaller level consistent with their capacity. I know we've started doing that on a buy building basis in facilities to make sure that people have that opportunity. So but I think that still requires some cultivation and some grooming of vendors to know that opportunity is there. So that's the thing we're continuing to work on.
Okay, great. And that brings me to item number thirteen. I'm staying right on the procurement. One of the things that we, you know, some of the feedback was that people would ask, should I bid on this? Do you just want me on a list so you can check the box? Or are you guys really trying to do business? Do I have a real opportunity? And on this bid of item number thirteen is kind of interesting. I know we go with lowest, but we had the other word called best. Lowest and best, and best obviously is subjective. On here, it's only like a hundred and eight, it's only a hundred and seventy eight dollar difference between the lowest and a certified WBE. I'm not saying I don't know this particular bid, but when we look at this item number thirteen, this is an HVAC component at Paul Brown Stadium. But when you look at it, it's like, wow, it's only a hundred and seventy seven, a hundred and seventy eight dollar difference from from the two is very, very close. Of course, I don't know all the particulars. I'm not in the procurement office, but that's something that, you know, you look at a WBE, Women Own Certified Business, lost the bid by a hundred and seventy eight dollars. And that's this mighty close to me. So just those kind of things I want to keep an eye on. And we have it in here, the bold, the two bold people, once again, didn't get anything. But I was just looking at how close those two bids were in cost. And I don't know, you know, again, that's something to probably just, I wanted to put an asterisk. It wasn't that far off.
Yeah. And that's, and I can, number one, follow up with with you, Commissioner, on on the rationale behind the particular award. But number two, back to your initial point, as we get into implementing some of these strategies out of the disparity study, this would be something we'll probably have the more direct ability to assist with as we're talking about pricing that that close. I remember some of the recommendations out of the disparity study that we wanted to consider was things to allow for pricing allowances of certain amounts for 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 women and minority vendors. Assuming it was in a, in an industry class that was subject to the disparity study, but yeah, I'll, I can certainly get you the rationale for the for the bid award on this as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring light to that, that it wasn't that far off. And then the other thing is, we got to look at supply chain. If you're a smaller business, particularly a woman owner, minority owned business, a lot of times you can't get. I mean, we're having trouble, you know, what we say, supply chain, trying to get stuff in. And then they're, they're being charged more for the supplies than maybe a bigger company that might, you know, order more bulk.
Sure.
Or has a, you know, has something where they can, you know, put something on credit, you know. So we have to look at those things too, that the supplies, they're not getting them in at the same amount, you know. If you, if I go to Kroger's, buy one loaf of bread, but then, you know, a restaurant come in and they might be buying, you know, thirty five loaves of bread. They're going to get the the bread at a cheaper price than I'm getting it. So just want to put that on the docket too, because the supplies may cost them a little bit more if you're a smaller, especially if you're a smaller business. Those were the ones that I wanted to, I believe, those eleven and thirteen. Eleven and thirteen were the ones that I wanted to bring some attention to. Thank you.
Commissioner Drenhouse.
Thank you. Yeah, I just have two items that I wanted to get some explanation on. The first one is item number ten. It's budget adjustment number twenty four. The dollar amount for this one is fairly high, four point five million under money going to jobs and family services. And so I know we asked John Brugan to illuminate a little bit, but since he's in the room, I'm going to ask John to do that publicly so that we can better understand this, where this money's going.
Right. Of the four and a half million there, for JFS, about three hundred thousand of that is a real expense related to mileage reimbursements that I think you're aware of. It's been pending for some time and it catches up on that. The balance of that four and a half million is essentially just audit, moving audit numbers around. They have a they're taking a new approach to how they're doing purchase orders. Their purchase order approach was very granular and was splitting up contracts over multiple purchase orders and it was very cumbersome for the staff. They are canceling a boatload of those purchase orders in prior years that are uncovering prior year budgets and reencumbering them under a new, simpler system, complete wash in terms of dollars on the rest of that.
Yeah, that's helpful. It's just that that number jumped out. So
Absolutely.
Appreciate the explanation. The other item was item seventeen. So item seventeen is about environmental services, purchasing Subaru Legacy. My understanding is this is an EV, an electric vehicle?
No, I don't believe it is. I don't believe so. I think there's just.
Let's see how helpful I was. Okay.
No, I think that this one, though, I believe is, there is a operational need and they had gone off for procurement and this was the the vehicle that could be delivered in the time period that the department needed.
Okay. So just candidly, having sat here for, I guess, five years, I'm used to seeing American made cars in front of us. I know this Subaru plant is in the United States, and so there are American workers working on these cars. However, it is surprising to to see a Subaru on here. So I just want to note that and just I will speak for myself and say I'm hopeful that we will particularly focus on American-made cars built in the United States as we look to purchase vehicles. And since it's not an EV, I'm going to say I hope we see some EVs coming up shortly, especially Environmental Services. That's maybe that's why I thought it was an EV, because of the department that's purchasing it. But I do hope, I I know we've talked about it, we've had a presentation about it, we've signed a a resolution saying we want to start to purchase EVs in our fleet. And I I know there's some infrastructure that needs to take place too, but I'm looking forward to then the first, because we have not had an EV yet, have we?
Not that, I don't think one that has come before the board specifically.
All right, well, then we'll all look forward to that.
Madam President, if I could, just on that note, in following the board's policy direction on this, I did this week send something out to departments, including Planning and Development, County Engineer, JFS, the Clerk of Courts, the Sheriff, and others to participate in a working group. It'll be spearheaded by Environmental Services to provide a report back on considerations with moving forward with electric vehicle purchases. Hopefully get that report back by the, if not the end of the year, very beginning of the year next year, so we can move forward on it. And as you're already aware, we've already taken action through the Purchasing Department to begin adjusting our procurement documents so that we now have the opportunity when we go out for these procurements that that vendors have to specify an electric vehicle alternative, so the departments have the ability to. It doesn't do any good to be willing to buy electric vehicles if when you go out to procure them, that opportunity doesn't exist. So we're making sure that our execution matches the board's policy intent in that regard.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right, thanks.
Madam President, can I have a, can I follow up question on that? I I do agree. I thought this was electrical vehicle either, so I didn't even ask a question. So thank you, Commissioner Drehouse, for asking that question. But we do get a lot of cars and don't we keep them for a couple of years? And I'm just concerned that we go out and get these cars and is it three years, four years? I don't want to have it where, you know, we done bought up all the cars and now electric vehicles, it'll be a couple of years.
We have a a number of cars, vehicles on the replace, I don't know the exact amount of rolling stock in the in the county exactly at this point in time, but the turnover rate is such that, yes, we have vehicles churned through every single year, so. There's there's no danger of implementing electric vehicles and next year not having the opportunity to purchase any of them, right?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And so the discussion just had me thinking a little bit. John, you had mentioned about JFS is starting a new purchasing system. Is that a new process or is it a new computer system that we're maybe paying additional money for?
It's just a new process.
New process. Okay, thank you. And I wanted to digress just a little bit. Vice President Reese brought up some great points as it relates to Airmark. We had talked about them and that they're such a big company and they always get the contract. And so how can we go to smaller entities to get like the cooks for the juvenile detention area? Can they maybe have someone go for a smaller JFS site? And so we need to not just, I heard you say you were going to get back to Vice President Reese as far as a hundred and seventy-eight dollars. I guess what really bothers me is the fact that, okay, we're trying to get a smaller company involved. The agreement or the 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 lease agreement, however, we not lease agreement, but the agreement that we sign with Airmark, it may be, and you mentioned it, Vice President Reese, it may be five years, six years. So for a hundred and seventy-eight dollars, you have this small company that did not have an opportunity to get in on this. And so not saying give anybody any advantage, what we know as a board, we're saying to be inclusive. And certainly when you get that information back to her, I'm sure all of us would like to see it. But now how long does this company have to wait? Since they were not chosen, it's really a serious issue and we're really advocating that we pull in those small businesses and especially the ones that don't have the really technical skills that only certain companies can do. I mean, like a cleaning service, a cooking service. That shouldn't be that difficult to get a smaller company to do. And I'm thinking now Airmark has the cleaning and they have the cooking and they're like, and nothing against Airmark, because I used to work for them when I was a teenager, but we need to really look at these big companies just taking over everything. I know plenty of cleaning companies and I know you guys do too, plenty of businesses that can cook. So I'm just really saying, we don't want to just keep saying this, we want it to happen. And I know Airmark reported back that they were going, they were subcontracting to a few smaller ones. I'd like to see that list if they've done any more since then. And it's not just Airmark, it's it's the big, the big guys need to be, if they get the contract, they need to subcontract. And then we as a county need to make sure that this one seventy-eight does not make the difference of who gets agreement.
Madam President, if I could, now we forward that analysis on, I think you just referred to, and that was, I think specifically in the Juvenile Court Detention Area where there was a bid for food service and they had indicated that that they did subcontract with smaller local vendors for specific types of food offerings within the the Juvenile Justice Center. And I'll I'll reforward that to the board just for your information during, as we continue to work on this particular issue.
And and that's great, and I'm glad that they did, and I hope they're continuing to, I'd like to see that they continue to do it. We were looking at that time. We haven't had a chance to look again, so hopefully it continued and they're adding more on, so that'll be great.
Okay.
Okay, so with no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve items five through twenty-eight.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. With no further business that come before the board, I'd like to make make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.